This is America in the Morning from Westwood One. I'm John Trout. It's Friday, August 1st, 2025. Here's what's coming up on America in the Morning.
As the latest tariff deadline expires.
We have made a few deals today.
But not with some of our biggest trading partners. I'm Richard Johnson.
Local officials are facing scrutiny over response to deadly flooding weeks ago in Texas. I'm Ed Donahue.
The White House says Trump envoy Steve Whitkoff and U.S. Ambassador Mike Huckabee will inspect food distribution in Gaza. I'm Haye Panjwani.
Arkansas State Police arrested a 28-year-old and charged him with two counts of capital murder. I'm Ben Thomas.
China's cyberspace regulators have summoned Nvidia. I'm Lisa Dwyer.
Federal prosecutors say former NBA star Gilbert Arenas has been arrested. I'm Gethin Coolball.
Kamala Harris says she's written a book about her historic presidential campaign. Sagar Magani Washington.
All ahead on America in the Morning. President Trump has issued a brief extension on the deadline for other countries to make a trade deal with the U.S. Correspondent Rich Johnson has a look at which nations are currently in the hot seat.
Just hours before the deadline expired at midnight, President Trump said he's been busy.
We have made a few deals today.
The president told reporters Thursday that does not include our largest trading partner, Canada, blaming Canada's inaction and retaliation. A White House statement says as of today, the tariffs on goods from Canada is now 35%. The other big country going into today with the deadline passage means the U.S. is now imposing a 25% tariff on imports from India. So why all the talk about this third trade agreement deadline?
It's pressuring countries to come to the table and do last-minute deals.
Frances Stacey of Scarlet Oak Financial told Fox News, "The process isn't over, but it may be more expensive." New hired tariffs are set to take effect in seven days on countries without deals today. Some of the other big ones are Taiwan, Brazil, South America, and Australia. Mexico doesn't have a deal, but the talks continue, so it has received a 90-day reprieve. I'm Richard Johnson.
Hearings have started into the failures surrounding the deadly Texas flooding in early July. Correspondent Ed Donahue reports local officials were the first to get scrutinized.
More than 130 people, mostly in Kerr County, were killed. At a hearing, county emergency management director Dub Thomas says he was sick the day before floodwaters started rising.
I briefly woke around 2:00 P.M. when there was no local rainfall or indication of elevated risk and returned to rest.
Thomas says he missed two calls from Texas Emergency Management. Kerr County Sheriff Larry Letha acknowledged being asleep as the crisis was unfolding. The top county official, Judge Rob Kelly, says he was out of town but was alerted early in the morning.
And I don't remember if they woke me up or I woke up.
Texas Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick expressed his frustration.
I'm not pointing a finger, I'm not blaming you. I just want to set the record straight. Everyone was here that day working their ass off, and you were nowhere to be found.
Local officials also said they needed but lacked an updated warning system. I'm Ed Donahue.
Gaza residents are scrambling for aid as pauses in the fighting have allowed food and other key items to enter the war-torn region. Correspondent Haye Panjwani reports U.S. officials are on the ground to inspect the distribution of supplies.
The White House says Trump envoy Steve Whitkoff and U.S. Ambassador Mike Huckabee will inspect food distribution in Gaza on Friday. That's shortly after scores of Palestinians in Zewada ran towards airdropped food aid. Border crossings continue to be closed amid severe food insecurity across the Gaza Strip. Islam al-Talbani, a displaced woman in Jabaleh, said she was carrying resources when she was attacked and bitten. She dropped the items and returned home without aid. She says, "I went and my children prayed that I'd return with food. They haven't eaten or drank anything for two days. This breaks me, the fact that they're waiting for me to feed them." One person said someone stole a bag of flour from him, and he broke a tooth in the struggle. Over the past 24 hours, the Gaza Health Ministry says at least 91 Palestinians have been killed and more than 600 have been wounded while trying to get aid. I'm Haye Panjwani.
The top stories of the day are brought to you by Sleep Number. Smarter sleep is life-changing. Save up to $800 on select Sleep Number Smart Beds. Limited time only at Sleep Number. When we return on America in the Morning, murder suspect nabbed, and more calls for Hezbollah This is America in the Morning. Most of the East Coast experiencing a big cooldown for the weekend. Here's AccuWeather.com meteorologist LaTroy Thornton.
Today marks a rather drastic change for the Northeast and Mid-Atlantic, not only from what was a very wet Thursday for some, but also from the very warm-to-hot start of this week, as the passage of a cold front pulls in much cooler and drier air, as any showers and steady rain come to an end from southern New England into the mid-Atlantic states. The effects of the front were already felt on Thursday in places such as Albany, New York, where daytime highs around 70 served as a stark contrast to the lower 90s of the previous three days. Lower humidity arriving into the weekend and plenty of sun will make for a wonderful start to August, but there is one potential catch to the pleasant conditions. That catches the return of Canadian wildfire smoke, and the southward and eastward extent of this latest round of impacts from smoke may prevent some areas from what would otherwise be a great stretch of nice weather for outdoor plans. Right now, the most likely area for at least some hazy conditions through Saturday is expected to extend from the shores of Lakes Erie and Ontario westward to eastern Colorado and Montana. However, some concentrated pockets where the smoke may be more likely to reach the surface and lead to poor air quality may include the Great Lakes and areas as far to the west as the eastern Dakotas, with wildfires in Utah and northern Arizona leading to similar conditions in those areas and into western Colorado. Elsewhere, storms developing along a cold front over the southeast from northern Louisiana to the Outer Banks may be gusty at times later today, and the risk for a thunderstorm extends westward from there into New Mexico and northward through western Montana into the interior Pacific Northwest, with heavy storms from eastern Colorado into eastern Montana. In Morgantown, West Virginia, today brings more sun and lower humidity through the day, the high just 75. For red in California, look for sun and typical August warmth, high 100. That's the nation's weather. I'm AccuWeather.com meteorologist LaTroy Thornton.
Remember, you can follow us wherever you get your podcasts. Simply search America in the Morning in your favorite listening app. Arrest in the double homicide of a couple at an Arkansas State Park. Correspondent Ben Thomas has details.
Arkansas State Police arrested a 28-year-old and charged him with two counts of capital murder in the deaths of a husband and wife at Devil's Den State Park over the weekend. The bodies of Clinton David Brink and Kristen Amanda Brink were found Saturday on a walking trail. Their daughters, ages seven and nine, were not hurt and are being cared for by family members. The Brink family says the couple died heroes protecting their little girls. The suspects identified as James Andrew McCan of Springdale. Police did not mention a possible motive. I'm Ben Thomas.
Lebanon's president is calling for the militant group Hezbollah to disarm. As correspondent Charles De La Desma reports, U.S. pressure on the Middle Eastern country is growing.
Lebanese President Joseph Ioun has urged the militant group Hezbollah to give up its weapons, a day after the group's chief doubled down on its refusal to disarm. Ioun tells lawmakers, "Under the Lebanese proposal, there would be an immediate cessation of Israeli hostilities in Lebanon, including airstrikes and targeted killing, a full withdrawal of Israeli forces from southern Lebanon, and the release of Lebanese prisoners held in Israel." Lebanon, for its party, says, "Would implement the withdrawal of the weapons of all armed forces, including Hezbollah, and their surrender to the Lebanese army." Ioun's comments, made during a speech during Army Day in Lebanon, comes as pressure increases from Washington to disarm Hezbollah. I'm Charles De La Desma.
With your Friday business report, here's CNBC's Jessica Etinger.
Wall Street opens this morning for the first day of August trading after wrapping up a mixed July for the major averages. And yesterday, the markets faded from morning gains into afternoon losses. The month of July for the Dow was a loser, but the S&amp;P 500 index and the Nasdaq finished higher. Many Americans have an S&amp;P 500 index fund in a brokerage or a retirement account. It added 2% for July, and for the year, it's up 7%. The next few months historically can be a little dicey for investors.
August historically is a flat month for the S&amp;P, and in September, it's historically down 2% in the S&amp;P.
Hightower's Stephanie Link on CNBC. Apple knocked it out of the park for the quarter, and one investor says the company's trying to get its AI act together.
I think it has spent about a year and a half developing artificial intelligence the wrong way. I think the good news is that it realizes that, and it's going through a major reorganization now to try to sort through those problems and deliver on this vision of Apple Intelligence that it brought to us last year and hasn't delivered.
Big Technologies' Alex Kantrowitz on CNBC. Amazon, dealing with tariffs, issued a gloomy profit outlook with its earnings report last night. President Trump calling out 17 American drug companies for not abiding by a spring order, and he's giving them 60 days for real plans to lower drug prices. Graphic design software company Figma debuted on Wall Street, making the founder wealthy in hours yesterday.
Mr. Field, at 33 years old, owns 61.3 million shares. He is now one of the richest tech founders in the history of America, and off the top of my head, I'm just going to say it, one of the five youngest self-made billionaires of all time.
No doubt about it. Now, it did price to the new issues market at 33 bucks last night, opened at 85. And then, once it was free to trade, it did trade up to the low 90s. Clearly, it brought out some supply of those, you know, people who were lucky enough to get it at 33, and they're going to cash in some.
CNBC's Mike Santoli with Brian Sullivan. Beer sales for AB Inbev fell again overall in the last quarter, but the U.S. and Canada are doing their part to help the beer maker.
AB Inbev sinking after reporting earnings, the maker of beers including Budweiser, Bud Light, and Corona. They reported an unexpected decline in second-quarter volumes, weak sales in Brazil and China that weighed on results, while the North American market actually outperformed. So this is the ninth straight quarter of declining beer sales for the company.
CNBC's Frank Holland. On today's watch list, it's a jobs Friday. The July employment report out at 8:30 Eastern. New in theaters, Universal's The Bad Guys 2 and Paramount's The Naked Gun reboot.
CNBC's Jessica Etinger. China is raising concerns over cyber safety risks with the new Nvidia chip. Correspondent Lisa Dwyer has details.
China's cyberspace regulators have summoned Nvidia over potential backdoor safety risks in its H2O chips, saying the chips can be tracked and turned off remotely. Two weeks ago, the U.S. lifted a block on those chips, allowing Nvidia to resume sales in China. The U.S. does still ban the sale of the most advanced chips to China that are necessary for developing artificial intelligence. Concerns over chip tracking and security have been raised by both Chinese regulators and U.S. lawmakers. I'm Lisa Dwyer.
Correspondent Alex Vega takes a look at this week's mortgage rates.
Another modest pullback in mortgage rates. Freddie Mac says the average rate on a 30-year mortgage slipped to 6.72% this week. The average rate is now back to where it was three weeks ago. Rates on 15-year fixed mortgages, popular with homeowners seeking to refinance, also eased. Despite the recent pullback, mortgage rates remain elevated and not far from their high of around 7% earlier this year. That's helped keep the housing market in a sales slump, even as home prices keep climbing. I'm Alex Vega.
A retired three-time NBA All-Star has been arrested for allegedly hosting illegal poker games. Correspondent Gethin Coolball reports.
Federal prosecutors say former NBA star Gilbert Arenas has been arrested, along with five other people, including a suspected member of an Israeli organized crime group, on suspicion of hosting illegal high-stakes poker games at a Los Angeles mansion owned by Arenas. The U.S. Attorney's Office says that all six defendants are charged with one count of conspiracy to operate an illegal gambling business and one count of operating an illegal gambling business. The 43-year-old Arenas is also charged with making false statements to federal investigators. I'm Gethin Coolball.
After ruling out a run for the governor of California earlier this week, former Vice President Kamala Harris took to social media to make an announcement. Correspondent Sagar Magani has the story.
Kamala Harris says she's written a book about her historic presidential campaign.
I cannot wait for you to read this.
It's called 107 Days, The Length of Her Brief Run.
The shortest presidential campaign in modern history.
In a social media video, Harris says she spent a lot of time thinking about it.
With candor and reflection, I've written a behind-the-scenes account of that journey.
The book will be published in September by Simon &amp; Schuster, which will not give specifics about what Harris wrote about, including her thoughts on President Biden's fitness for office. Instead, the publisher says Harris, quote, "addresses everything we would want her to address." Sagar Magani, Washington.
Francis Scott Key was born on this date in 1779. He was an American lawyer, poet, and composer who wrote The Star-Spangled Banner. America in the Morning for Friday, August 1st, 2025, is produced by Alexander Hinton. I'm John Trout. This is America in the Morning from Westwood One. I'm John Trout. Coming up this half hour.
Kerr County's top emergency official admits he was asleep as deadly floodwaters rose. I'm Sue Aller.
You can see there a man on top of the roof of his car waiting to be rescued.
Strong storms and flash flooding leaving people stranded in the northeast. I'm Bob Brown.
Delta Airlines says 25 people were taken to hospitals after a flight from Salt Lake City to Amsterdam hit turbulence.
I'm Jennifer King.
SEC Chair announces Project Crypto. I'm tech correspondent Chuck Palm.
That and more after these messages. Follow us wherever you get your podcasts. Simply search America in the Morning in your favorite listening app. President Trump signs an executive order placing new tariffs on dozens of countries and pushing the deadline back by one week for others. So who's in and who's out? Correspondent Rich Johnson has details.
Just hours before the deadline expired at midnight, President Trump said he's been busy.
We have made a few deals today.
The president told reporters Thursday that does not include our largest trading partner, Canada, blaming Canada's inaction and retaliation. A White House statement says as of today, the tariffs on goods from Canada is now 35%. Earlier this week on social media, Trump wrote that Canada's intention to recognize a Palestinian state could impede a trade deal. Then yesterday, he rolled that back a bit.
No, I didn't like what they said, but you know, that's, that's their opinion. I didn't like that. Not a deal breaker.
Still, a 35% tariff is not sitting well north of the border.
I wouldn't roll over, and I've told the Prime Minister, "Do not roll over. Hit that guy back as hard as we possibly can."
That's Ontario Premier Doug Ford. The other big country going into today with no new trade deal with the U.S. is India.
To undermine our relationships with allies like India, I think it's really bad for our country and for the American people.
Virginia Democratic Congressman Soha Subramaniam speaking to the financial news site Mint. The deadline passage means the U.S. is now imposing a 25% tariff on imports from India. So why all the talk about this third trade agreement deadline?
It's pressuring countries to come to the table and do last-minute deals.
Frances Stacey of Scarlet Oak Financial told Fox News, "The process isn't over, but it may be more expensive."
If countries don't come in ahead of the deadline and capitulate somewhat to what Trump is asking them for, they can come back later, but it's just going to cost them more.
New hired tariffs are set to take effect in seven days on countries without deals today. Some of the other big ones are Taiwan, Brazil, South America, and Australia. Mexico doesn't have a deal, but the talks continue, so it has received a 90-day reprieve. I'm Richard Johnson.
Texas officials hold the first public hearings on the deadly floods in early July that left over 100 people dead, including dozens of children. Correspondent Sue Aller reports one local official claimed they were under the weather when the floodwaters began to rise.
It was one of the deadliest floods in Texas history, and now we're learning more about what didn't happen behind the scenes. For the first time, Kerr County's emergency management director, William Dub Thomas, admits he was asleep and homesick while water levels on the Guadalupe River rose rapidly on July 3rd. He says his supervisors were aware that he was off duty that day.
I stayed in bed throughout July 3 and did not participate in the regularly scheduled 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Texas Emergency Management Coordination Center coordination calls.
By the time he was called in the next morning, 100-year flood conditions were already devastating summer camps and neighborhoods.
By approximately 6:00 a.m., I was actively coordinating our county's response in close contact with the sheriff, the Emergency Operations Center, and Mr. Hughes, working together under rapidly changing and difficult conditions.
At a 10th state hearing, lawmakers questioned why no co-read alerts were issued and why only six of the 19 camps had emergency plans. Lawmakers cited that multiple flood warnings were issued by the National Weather Service on July 3rd. The flood killed 108 people, 37 of them children, and left deep questions about emergency response failures. I'm Sue Aller.
Police in Arkansas arrest the man they believe to be responsible for the murders of a couple out walking with their children in a state park. Correspondent Katie Clark has been following the story.
In what could be described as an unthinkably horrible crime, police are still looking for a motive in the murder of two people. Clinton Brink and his wife Kristen were hiking in Devil's Den State Park in Arkansas with their seven-year-old and nine-year-old daughters last weekend when they were approached by a man with a knife. As the man stabbed Clinton, Kristen ran with their daughters to safety. She returned just minutes later to find her husband killed, and that's when McGann stabbed her to death. The daughters, who witnessed the murders, escaped physical harm and went to get help, being able to give a description to police. After a five-day manhunt, Andrew James McGann was arrested about 30 miles away while getting a haircut at a salon. He admitted to police that he killed the couple. In the investigation, police found his DNA at the crime scene. McGann has no known prior criminal history and had been working as a schoolteacher, passing background checks. Major Stacy Rhodes, Criminal Investigation Division commander.
We're still exploring and determining exactly what that motive was. We still have a lot of work to do in terms of, you know, securing a conviction because that's our next big focus right now.
McGann faces two counts of capital murder and will make a court appearance on Friday. I'm Katie Clark.
Strong storms produced flash flooding in the northeast, forcing first responders to rescue people who became trapped by the fast-rising waters. Correspondent Bob Brown reports.
Severe storms barreling through the northeast from Washington, D.C. to New York City. Several inches of rain falling in less than an hour in some parts, creating flash flooding. Highways and roads flooded out, with first responders rescuing people and cars. Fox 5 New York on the scene of a man standing on the roof of a car on a flooded highway in Queens, New York.
You can see rescue crews on scene, cars, and even this white big truck submerged in water. You can see there a man on top of the roof of his car waiting to be rescued. I was told that that gentleman got out of the car, then went back in his car, and that's when firefighters told him absolutely not get out and get on top of the car, meaning get on the roof until he was rescued.
Subway tracks and some commuter rail lines were affected by flooding as well. A state of emergency issued in New York and New Jersey.
And a similar scene in North Plainfield, New Jersey, that is where flooding is already an issue. This is a scene on Route 22 where cars are being forced to make their way through rising waters. It is an area hit hard by severe weather in the past recent weeks.
Strong storms and numerous lightning strikes in central and southern Jersey. Two people were recently struck and killed by lightning in New Jersey. Officials and forecasters say many roads were flooded, leaving cars stranded in Maryland and Pennsylvania. I'm Bob Brown.
The execution of a death row inmate in Tennessee is back on the schedule after a brief stay was issued by the courts. Correspondent Lisa Dwyer has details.
Tennessee's high court has ruled that a death row inmate can be executed without deactivating his implanted defibrillator. The ruling overturns a lower court's order and paves the way for Byron Black to be executed Tuesday morning as scheduled. The Tennessee Supreme Court found that requiring that the device be deactivated would effectively interfere with the execution. At issue was whether the device will continuously shock his heart, potentially causing unnecessary suffering and violation of the state and federal constitutions. Also at issue is exactly who will disable the device. Black was convicted in the 1988 shooting death of 29-year-old Angela Clay and her two daughters. Prosecutors say that Black was in a jealous rage when he shot the three at their home. Black had previously shot Clay's estranged husband. I'm Lisa Dwyer.
A Delta Airlines flight had to make an emergency landing after running into some severe turbulence. Correspondent Jennifer King reports some passengers were taken to the hospital once the aircraft was safely back on solid ground.
Delta Airlines says 25 people were taken to hospitals after a flight from Salt Lake City to Amsterdam hit turbulence. The plane was diverted to Minneapolis-St. Paul. Passenger Leanne Clement Nash told ABC News they had started dinner service when the plane jolted up in the air and then fell steeply, rendering them weightless for a few moments. She said liquid rose out of drink cups, service carts were tossed around, and people who weren't wearing a seatbelt hit the ceiling and then fell back down. Nash and her husband praised the calm and professionalism of the Delta flight attendants during the incident. I'm Jennifer King.
Correspondent Haye Panjwani reports that some areas of the western U.S. are seeing changes in the weather due to the high heat being put off by high-intensity wildfires.
Two wildfires burning in the western United States are so hot that they're forming fire clouds. They can create their own unpredictable weather systems. The wildfire in Arizona that destroyed the Grand Canyon Lodge and dozens of other buildings has become a mega-fire. Meanwhile, a wildfire in Utah's Monroe Canyon has burned 75 square miles. Arizona Fire Information Officer Lisa Jennings explains how fire clouds, or pyrocumulus clouds, work.
They suck in that superheated gas and create their own wind systems. If they get high enough, they can also create downdrafts, and that's something we really watch out for, because that can quickly spread the fire and can be very dangerous for firefighters who are doing their work on the ground.
The same type of cloud recently formed a fire tornado that tore through an eastern Utah neighborhood with wind speeds at about 122 miles per hour. I'm Haye Panjwani.
The launch of an astronaut bound for the International Space Station was called off at the last minute. Correspondent Ed Donahue reports.
Thick clouds prompted SpaceX to call off Thursday's planned launch of four astronauts to the International Space Station for NASA. The countdown was halted at the 1 minute 7 second mark. SpaceX's next launch attempt from the Kennedy Space Center is Friday, although the weather forecast is less favorable. I'm Ed Donahue.
With the deadline for Russia to make a ceasefire deal with Ukraine or face heavy sanctions from the U.S., just one week away, correspondent Charles De La Desma reports the Kremlin is showing no indication it plans to stop launching attacks.
Russia fired 300 Shahed and decoy drones and eight Iskander K cruise missiles, the Ukrainian Air Force says, the large-scale attack targeting the Kyiv, Nipropol, Tavas, Suma, and Mykolaiv regions. Ukrainian Air Forces intercepted and jammed the majority, but five missiles and 21 drones struck targets. The Kyiv attack killed a six-year-old boy and wounded over 50 others. Kyiv City Military Administration Head Taimo Tokashenko says the casualty numbers are likely to rise. A large part of a nine-story residential building collapsed after it was struck. Rescue teams are at the scene searching for people trapped under the rubble. Meanwhile, Russia's Ministry of Defense says it shot down over 30 Ukrainian drones. I'm Charles De La Desma.
SEC Chair Paul Atkins just announced sweeping new rules for cybersecurity, trading, and exchanges. Correspondent Chuck Palm has more in today's tech report.
The U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission, led by Chair Paul Atkins, just unveiled Project Crypto, a sweeping plan to overhaul capital markets and embrace cryptocurrencies, as well as blockchain trading. Atkins, speaking at the America First Policy Institute, laid out a bold vision to bring crypto into the mainstream, directing the SEC staff to craft clear rules on when a token is a security. This would help define blockchain-based stocks or funds and new rules for disclosures and exemptions on crypto firms. The plan also greenlights initial coin offerings, airdrops, staking, and innovative exemptions for startups. This is a full 180-degree turn from the Biden-era SEC crackdown, which sued Coinbase and Kraken for flouting the securities laws. This falls in line with the newly signed Genius Act and backs the Clarity Act for crypto rules. For more crypto news, follow me on X, @ChuckPalm.
Friday sports has arrived. Here's America in the Morning's Robert Workman.
MLB's trade deadline day did not disappoint those who revel in the chaos. More than two dozen deals were done, with the Padres adding closer Mason Miller and lefty starter J.P. Sears from the A's, outfielders Ryan O'Hern and Ramon Laureano from the Orioles, and catcher Freddie Freeman from the Royals. The Astros brought back their former number-one overall draft pick Carlos Correa in a trade with the Twins, and they got outfielder Jesus Sanchez from the Marlins. The Yankees added three relievers, including former Pirates closer David Bednar. After addressing their bullpen earlier, the Mets got centerfielder Cedric Mullins from the Orioles. The Tigers added veteran starter Charlie Morton from the O's and closer Kyle Finnegan from the Nationals. And the Rangers picked up starter Merrill Kelly from the D-backs, as well as bullpen arms Phil Maton from the Cards and Danny Colome from the Twins. Just three games on the slate on Thursday. Program sales are expected to skyrocket tonight as all 30 teams return to action. A wild one in Cincinnati, where the Braves scored eight times in the eighth inning to break open a tie game, only to have the Reds put up a snowman in the home half. Atlanta wound up winning it 12-11 in 10 innings. Yankees outlasted the Rain and the Rays 7-4, and the Mariners shut out the Rangers 6-0. George Kirby and company with a four-hitter. Cal Raleigh hit homer number 42. NFL 2025 is officially underway with last night's preseason opener, the Hall of Fame Game. The Chargers bolted past the Lions 34-7. Saturday's induction ceremonies in Canton, Ohio will welcome cornerback Eric Allen, defensive end Jared Allen, tight end Antonio Gates, and receiver Sterling Sharp. That's Friday sports.
Like the bad guys? Like The Bad Guys, you can get even more of them in this sequel in theaters now. Here's entertainment correspondent Kevin Carr.
Three years ago, The Bad Guys delivered a unique, fresh animated adventure. Now they're back for another score in The Bad Guys 2.
Things sure have changed. Not everyone believes it, but The Bad Guys went good.
This time, they're blackmailed into a job by a notorious criminal and have to find a way to pull things off but keep their new good guys reputation.
So are we bad again?
We just got to do this one last job. Overall, this is fun and entertaining. The excellent voice cast returns, and it's not just lowbrow body humor. Both those jokes are in there to get the laughs from the kiddies.
You're not nervous, right? Because we know what happens when you're nervous.
Buddy, I'm sorry.
What?
No, no, no.
The only crime committed in The Bad Guys 2 is going bigger for the sequel.
We need The Bad Guys for the biggest heist in history.
I know it's a film that has a tarantula as a computer expert and a piranha walking around on land, but at some point, the absurdity goes too far.
Webbs, do you think?
I'll be your hacker today.
Where the Fast and Furious franchise took 20 years and nine films, this movie does it in 90 minutes. I'm no rocket scientist, but even I had trouble swallowing the third act.
First time for everything, right?
Still, it's a slick film that should appeal to the whole family.
Showtime.
Even if it is a bit overblown.
Oh, baby.
The Bad Guys 2 gets three wolf whistles out of five. I'm Kevin Carr, and that's the way I see it.
President Trump says he plans to bring back an old tradition for school-aged children. Correspondent Saagar Magani has details.
Generations of kids did it, running, sit-ups, pull-ups, or push-ups. The Presidential Fitness Test, created in 1966 and phased out in 2012.
This was a wonderful tradition, and we're bringing it back.
The president's also reviving the president's council on sports, fitness, and nutrition. He showed off its new members at the White House, including a football legend.
LT, greatest ever, Lawrence Taylor.
And the president's excited.
This is an important step in our mission to make America healthy again.
And fits with his focus on sports.
You learn about people, and you learn about how people compete. Now, it doesn't mean that if somebody's not a good athlete, a lot of people just are not good athletes, so they can't compete. But you learn about people.
Saagar Magani, Washington.
Colorado was admitted as the 38th state to join the Union on this date, the year America in the Morning for Friday, August 1st, 2025, is produced by Alexander Hinton. I'm John Trout. This is Westwood One.